Good evening. We call to order the Cleveland Heights University Heights School District Board of Education Work Session Meeting. Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Heinz.
Here.
Ms. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Posh.
Here.
Ms. Serini. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Serini won't be with us today because her son is leaving for college. So we'll have to excuse her. Okay, Mr., can I get a consent? Can I get a motion for the consent agenda, please?
A motion that we consider the consent agenda.
My second.
Is there any discussion?
A couple things. One, I'm super happy that we've hired all of our success coaches or success tutors and, you know, that everything is ready for next week. So kudos to Dr. Lombardo and your team for that because it's a huge list of people. And I had a question which I don't think we're going to be able to answer because Mr. Petcak isn't here. But if I say it out loud, then maybe his ears will burn. And the question was concerning the lowest responsible bid for parking lot work. And I wanted to know whether this bid is going to be sufficient for remedying the problems we have in the Oxford parking lot because the dollar amount seems less than what we had heard about. So I'm assuming that this is a stopgap measure, but I don't want to assume without being corrected. So that's just my question for.
Will note it and we'll get back to you on that.
We'll note it. Yeah, I'm assuming the answer is that it will, but we'll circle that back to you on that one.
Thank you.
Okay, and I also would like to congratulate Dr. Lombardo and Human Resources. We had a chance to meet new employees on yesterday's breakfast. It was wonderful. It was just a large number and they're very enthused and ready to go and excited about joining Tiger Nation. So thank you, Dr. Lombardo. My other question is the resolution that we are signing for transportation. And I had noticed that it was five different schools that were rejected for transportation. And if that, is it the reason for that is the budget? We can't afford it? Or how does that work? Or would the state take on that cost for transportation for those students?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I have to be back.
Okay.
I mean typically the way that works is if it is, if it's too few students, if it's too far away, for whatever reason, there are specific criteria that we would declare transportation to that school impractical, then we would end up making payments in lieu of to the parents for transportation.
Okay, they're clear.
Yeah. But we can get some more details when we're back to you.
All right, thank you. Okay, Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll?
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Okay, as we all know, this is a work session meeting. And now I would turn it over to the superintendent.
Good evening. It's hard to believe we are presenting our third update, progress update on our strategic plan. We are doing this in two parts. So the work session in August is for goals three, four, and five. And the work session in September are for goals one and two. So I'm going to ask the presenters to, I guess, who's going first because we'll have like several waves of presenters. You guys want to come to the front? And then I'll do like the first couple of slides just to kind of set it. You can just jump into the goal. So first up is our Supervisor of Communications, Kathan Cavanall, our Supervisor of Community and School Partnerships, Nancy Pepler, and our Family Engagement Specialist, Lisa Hunt. They will be followed by Scott Gaynor and Dr. Lombardo for goals four and five. If you want to go to, just to kind of set the frame. Here we have our mission, vision, and core values that undergird the strategic plan. I really like the opportunity to address all three goals because though these departments don't directly deal with academic performance for students, it is important to have strong communications, strong partnerships, and strong family engagement to reach our goals, to reach our mission and vision. The full strategic plan has four components, goals, objectives, strategies, and action steps. I know that everyone is familiar with our five goals. We're going to provide this evening updates on our action steps from last year that are connected to the goals and then also plans for this year across this goal areas. And then finally, as a reminder, cover our five big audacious goals. First is around third graders 100% showing proficiency. The second is all of our students showing proficiency on state assessments at the level of 80%. 90% of our ninth grade students having course success in algebra. 95% of students graduating in four years and 90% of our students having a viable career or college pathway. This is our 2026 plan. We are going into the 2024 school year, so we have 2024 and 2025 to continue this work. So I will now turn it over to the team for part one of this presentation. And then after, we can just type through. I think just from our process perspective, we'll do this first part, then we'll do the questions and discussion, then we'll bring people up subsequently. So you don't have to remember everything.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, good evening, everyone. I have with me Nancy Pepler and Lisa Hunt representing goal three. And as you know, that is centered around family and community engagement, partnerships, and communication. So the way we'll do it, I will start off and then Lisa and Nancy will follow. And we will update you on some of our action step progress as well as our measures that matter or KPIs and some next steps. So these are just some of the action steps. We would be here for a very long time if we went through every single one of our action steps. We wanted to give you some of the high level ones and some of the big ones for this past year. So one of my action steps was to continue engaging in marketing outreach with our marketing partner, Little Jacket. And I know you've probably seen them up at the high school, but we did do a lot more banners this year. That includes the scholarship total for the class of 22 as well as 23 for this year. Our new public is for all banner on the back of the baseball scoreboard as well as kindergarten information night promotion. So they also did for us yard signs and they personally dropped off postcards with all of the dates at a lot of area daycares and preschools. So a lot of grassroots outreach there. They put together some NPR spots that ran in the weeks prior as well as print and digital Heights Observer ads. Little Jacket also facilitated three days' worth of candid photo shoots at our preschools and our high schools. So I've already begun using those photos for publications such as the calendar, which you should be getting very, very soon. Those are on their way. And the website and some more banners that are actually going to be going up at the high school and some more poll banners as well. So more to come on that. And I'm sure you also saw the wonderful video that we produced centered around Ashawn Sims and his great success with his many, many Ivy League full ride scholarship offers. So that is available. If you haven't seen it yet, it's available on our YouTube channel and our website and our social media. So check that out if you haven't seen it yet. So another step was adding a marketing emphasis for our newly registered families as part of the onboarding process. So we are regularly mailing a welcome letter to each of our families who have a newly registered student. And that gets to them roughly one week after they enroll. And just kind of a little preview of it here. So it's just a simple letter from the superintendent letting them know the first day of school with the staggered start dates in case their new student is a kindergartner, letting them know they can stop by the board to get a welcome packet and a T-shirt. Now, if they did register fully in person at Delisle, they already got all these items, but they do get the letter just in case. And some information on the back with QR codes. They can access the welcome packet digitally. They can access the Heights Family Handbook. They can sign up for Infinite Campus. And they can find dates and enrollment forms for Metro Health. So it's just kind of one of their first introductions to the school, just some very basic information. And I also want to mention, so Diana Druschel, who is my administrative assistant at the high school, she handles, as part of her role, all of the personal tours and shadowing days for prospective students. So they reach out to her and they give her some background information on their child and what their child is interested in and, you know, sports, academics, all of the above. And she sets them up with a student to have a shadow day if they so choose. So they spend the day with that student and they get to know the high school, they get to know some of the students and the teachers. And in looking at Diana's data from this year, she conducted 25 of these shadow days and we did have ultimately 10 confirmed transfers to Heights High School for next year. So we're pretty excited about that. She also gives personal tours to the families as well if they would like that. So another action step was developing a consistent process for how key information is communicated within the school system. This one is really broad, so I just wanted to mention one component that we enacted this year is that it is now a requirement rather than a suggestion that each school emails one newsletter per week at a minimum to all of their families. And what we've also done with this is created a page, a subpage on each school's webpage that contains essentially an archive of each of these newsletters. And then we have a link in our weekly update so that families can easily access their child's school's newsletters and they can go back to whatever dates they so desire. And then finally, at the district level, we are very mindful of sharing information in those weekly updates I just mentioned on progress reports and when they'll be getting those in the mail and on Infinite Campus, how to sign up for Infinite Campus and why they need to, the importance of attendance, which of course is going to be huge this year, and mat testing and other important testing dates. So in terms of my KPIs, my big one is that 90% of stakeholders are satisfied with district and school communication. So breaking it down by, first of all, by group and also the responses that we got from last year compared to this year. So this is the data from the families survey that went out at the end of the year. So I broke it down in a couple of different ways. Now, we asked specifically about their satisfaction with district communication, with teacher communication, and with principal communication. So you'll see here that we have, first of all, a lot fewer responses this year. So we're going to be very mindful next year about getting it out a little bit earlier and also trying to get out in different ways, too. So you can see that we had 410 last year and only 102 this year. So there's a pretty steep drop, which I think definitely affected these numbers. So we consider, conservatively, we consider satisfaction a four or a five on a one-to-five scale. So you can see the difference between simply a four or a five versus a three, four, or a five, which would essentially be neutral, satisfied, or very satisfied. So the silver lining here is that it doesn't seem to be that very many people are dissatisfied. It's a lot of neutrals, a lot of satisfied, plus very satisfied kind of lumped in there. Same thing for staff. We asked about district communication and communication with your supervisor. So again, breaking it down from last year by comparison, not as steep of a drop of responses for this one, but still significantly lower number. So you can see there that it's closer to the 80s when you factor in that three, four, and five for both categories.
When you mentioned the timing of the survey, what was the difference between school year 2021, '22, and 2022, '23?
I don't recall the exact difference. Maybe it could have been a week. I can go back and look and see the exact dates that we sent it.
Maybe a couple of weeks, maybe.
Yeah, I'm just surprised that it would have such a difference in the response rate that I'm wondering if there's something else causing that drop in response. I don't know.
I agree. And we're definitely going to keep looking into it because it was a pretty disappointing kind of turnout for it.
It's also interesting to me that, first of all, I think that it's great that we're tracking this stuff and really important. When I read it, so the one about, the one from staff, it's an interesting question, rate your satisfaction with district communication. What we don't know inside there is, are people interpreting that as the content of district communication, the regularity of district communication? You know, it's a hard thing to get a sense of really sort of a universal understanding of what people are interpreting the question to mean. So that might be an interesting thing for us to sort of try to dial in on.
Absolutely.
And I don't know what other, what else in there people might find useful.
Right, right. And what do you consider district communication as well?
Correct.
That can go for staff and families, too.
Right.
So you're right, it is a very broad question.
Is a staff meeting part of that sort of thing?
Right.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Kathan, are the same, okay, is it apples to apples? Is it the same question for school year '22 versus '23?
It was. This was the same question.
Is there any room to ask why you're dissatisfied or why you are satisfied? So do you get any narrative in feedback?
Yes, we, yeah, we asked if they scored low, which is a good point. Maybe we can ask if they scored high as well, but we were more concerned with if you scored a one or a two, then why was that? And I believe we asked that for all the different categories.
You may want to rerun it mid-year.
We could definitely explore that. I'll talk that over with Liz.
Especially with the staff, the families, I'm not sure you can. But it is kind of striking that, I mean, I didn't map it out or anything, but if you just sort of look at how it fell, it seemed like it fell equally amongst families as it did with staff.
I agree.
And again, it could, but there's less responses on all sides. So I mean, that could certainly have an issue.
The things we saw in the comments was because Kathan's office did a weekly, it was our first time actually doing, I think last year's the first time doing the weekly bulletin for the entire year.
So it was the first time that we split it up into two. So we had done it the year prior for at least most of the year, but we only did one bulletin to everybody, families and staff. Last year was the first year we did a separate one for staff and a separate one for families.
Based on the survey feedback from the previous year where people wanted, you know, some different information. So there was more, so there was, you know, more and more differentiated. But what I did recall seeing was there was, people wanted different kinds of information. So, you know, knowing the dates things are happening or, you know, poor car pickup, like that kind of stuff, sure, right? But really, some of the information people wanted was more about some things maybe happening at buildings that we wouldn't actually.
Programming kind of things.
You know, communicate, you know, principals are handling some of that communication or even some crisis communication stuff. So people kind of wanted that, which, you know, we had that session where we kind of talked through how we communicate and what we communicate. But that was one piece of feedback, which not surprising last year, you know, people really felt like, you know, we know it's Tiger Nation Friday or whatever it is, but like we actually want to know, you know, something else or can't we get more information about that? So I think that's probably one dynamic that was at play.
I want to drill down into one other issue, too, is, we all know, every public school district in the nation dealt with negative school culture or climate this past year. And I think we're definitely trying to wrap our arms around it. Do you have any survey data that helps measure that at all from one year to the other?
Yes, quite a lot of it, actually, which we can share with you at a later time. For this, I just focused on the communication survey. But yes, we did.
Yeah, that's fair.
Yes, we actually got a lot of questions from Hanover Research regarding school climate and culture, and they were very enlightening. And I'm currently in the process of breaking it down by schools, so the schools have them. But we do have an overview slide deck I can share with you.
Yeah, I'd love to see that and I'd love to see it broken down by building because we certainly know some buildings, I think from perception, which for all practical purposes is reality. I mean, some buildings feel like they've been especially hurt from last year.
Yep.
So, okay, Liz, thank you.
All right, Nancy?
All right. Hi, everyone. I'm also here to provide some updates on some of my action steps. And I'm going to start with the action step of expanding the community learning center work to include both Noble and Oxford. And as you know, we just completed our second full year of CLC at Noble. And we launched, you may not know the date, but we launched Oxford in February. And so we are active at both schools. Through the CLC work, we've expanded our partnerships. And as an example, partners have been included at every single family fun event or family engagement event that we've had at both buildings. So some of the examples that I share here are Holden Arboretum, Metro Health, Home Repair Resource Center, Heights Libraries, Lake Erie, Inc. We have a community partner providing enrichment or activities at every single event that we have, and we've had many of them. We also have a significant number of new organizations that have been partnering with us. And this year has only been at Noble. We're launching this next year at Oxford for expanded enrichment after school in the building. And this one number that I wanted, it's one that I wanted to share, that in the previous school year, we had 90, and these aren't unique students, so I want to clarify that, 90 slots of enrichment throughout the entire school year for Noble students for after-school enrichment, not including our fabulous 21st Century program. But this year, that was increased to 250 slots of enrichment. So to give you an example, every quarter, Cristian Copes Minor, who's the organizer, worked with the PTA to jointly plan and fund and then did very targeted outreach to families, talking to teachers about students that might benefit the most from the different types of enrichments, and then worked to enroll those students in those 10-week enrichment opportunities. So they would meet once a week for 10 weeks. So she did that quarterly. And so we see that as a great success. This summer, the two organizers, so Cristian and then Sabrina Ali at Oxford, worked together to plan some enhanced enrichment for our Oxford and Noble students. We were able to get 19 students enrolled in Case's National Youth Sports Program. I don't know if you want to click on that, but it's an interesting, it's a five-week program where students were, participated in, it's mostly sports, but it's also leadership. It's an opportunity for them to be on campus, for them to have interactions with students and with staff at Case. They had a meal there. So they were there every day from, I think it was eight to 1:00 p.m. And so we used some of the CLC dollars for enrollment for that. Next year, I'd love to, because we'll have more time to do it, I'd love to figure out how we can also, maybe not the district, but we can get some private funding to have transportation and we can get more kids there. They've agreed, they've agreed to allow us to enroll these students for the entire five weeks, full day, for $100 a student. And so it's a
It's $20 a week for a full-time program.
It's a real, we tried. Scott Smith and I talked about it. We really wanted to be able to provide transportation, but we can't. And I understand why we can't. But I, that's a goal for me for next year is for us to figure out how we can transport kids and, from all of our schools. But we focus this year on Oxford and Noble because of the CLC. And again, it took, it takes time. So Cristian and Sabrina did the outreach to the families and walked them through the process of the registration and nudged them to make sure that they showed up on the day that if they didn't show up and attend orientation at the camp, they couldn't stay. And so it's a, it requires a lot of handholding and partnership.
Hey, Nancy.
Yeah.
I mean, was the bus issue, the transportation issue more of a financial barrier or was it more of a staffing problem?
It's that we can't do it for our students and not offer it to all
All children.
People in the community who would request it for these types of camps.
I get it.
So if we're able to get some private funding for it, we can do that. And so that's a goal. I would love to do that because what a deal and what a great experience they had. And it's a program that has been going for years and years and years. The organizers also worked with Lake Erie, Inc. to have two different specialized camps. One was a half-day camp that was held for this, our students who were at our mornings at the high school as part of Tiger Camp Instruction. And then they came to Church on the Heights in the afternoon. Cristian and Sabrina supervised them and got them off the bus and had a few activities and then handed them off to Lake Erie, Inc. And then we had a different group of kids that participated in two different one-week full-day camps, also held at Church on the Heights. And that partnership's been expanding in part this summer because we were doing the construction at Noble and couldn't have activities there. And then we, again, like last year, we had lots of Fun Fridays, literacy on the lawn, popsicle playdates, where we typically had partners also work with us on those. You can go forward. This next slide is really about, and I don't want to take too much time on it here, but I'd really appreciate if you'd click through and read this at some point. But I wanted to share, and Liz supported me on this, that a lot of us in this room have participated in Cleveland State's Education Policy Fellowship Program. And I had that opportunity this year. And I had just such a fabulous experience because I worked in a team, which is unusual. You usually have a single project, policy project that you work on. But I worked on a team with the people listed here. So Christina Collins from the State Board of Ed, Scott Hunt from the Department of Ed, Allison Paxton from the Children's Defense Fund.
These are some heavy hitters.
And Paula Jones from Brooklyn City Schools. And we worked on the issue of community learning centers as a school improvement strategy in Ohio and on how well the strategy and the philosophy meshes with the whole child framework, which is something that ODE is embracing. And could you click on the link, please? So this week, the Children's Defense Fund published our white paper on their website and they're pushing it out in their social media. And you don't have to do it, Kathan, but the actual white paper is on the left there and you can look at the data that we collected and the recommendations that we made, which include, I've told you the story before, how 49 states call community learning centers community schools and only Ohio calls them CLCs, and that's so confusing to the entire world. The recommendation to transition what are currently family and community engagement partner liaisons at the ESC to work on CLC work, to amplify the CLC work in Ohio. And we also had a coalition that just worked on a federal proposal from the state with OFT, Ohio Federation of Teachers, to apply for a federal grant for a statewide implementation of CLCs. And then to support Ohio districts that are applying for the grants as a district, which we also did. So we just submitted that on August 8th. And our grant submission is if we, if we're successful this year, we will expand the strategy to Boulevard and Monticello.
Oh, cool.
So I'm super excited about that. I can't tell you that I'm very excited if that, and hopefully we'll get the grant this year. And then to also prioritize policy, budget, and administrative action to grow the footprint of school-based health, which is very connected to the CLC work.
So Nancy, do you think that this work from the state department, the ODE, whatever it's going to be called in the future?
No, whatever it's going to be.
DEW.
Well, I guess that's the question. I mean, do we feel like this work is going to be gutted?
Well, I can't speak to that. I can tell you that the, that the union, that I can tell you that the, that the union, that OFT is very much in support of this as a school improvement strategy. The Children's Defense Fund is, ODE sees it as a tool for putting the structure in place to, for the whole-child framework. I mean, it's so connected. I hope that doesn't happen, but nationally, it's really, the dollars are flowing in a way that they haven't before from the feds, the increase in the federal dollars that are available. Senator Brown's a huge supporter of this, and so I hope some dollars come back to Ohio this year.
So optimistically, you feel like two buildings can be added to it?
If we get the grant. Yeah, absolutely.
And when will, when will you know, without, like, holding your...
December 31st.
Okay.
Isn't that odd? Because, yeah, it's on the calendar year, so we're hopeful.
I'll still be here until midnight.
So my measure that matters is this 5% annual increase in impactful community partnerships, and you'll remember that this year, I conducted the baseline with each of the leadership teams at each building. And in school year 2024, I'll be working with the, not only measuring the increase, but working with our partner organizations to, for them to complete an application for partnership that will ask them to align their mission and programming with the building level goals. So this year is the first year I'll have a good measure of that 5%, but in addition, we'll be implementing the matching of the organization's missions and programs to the building-level goals.
And each building's goals are slightly different, because it depends on the student body of that building, correct?
Yeah, and they're, yeah, to their building-level action plan, and then also to the partnership goals that the buildings have, because they do, each building has a little bit of a different, when I met with them, they have different desires for additional partners in different areas.
When you talk about the increase of slots, was that just for Noble, or would that be shared with both Noble and Oxford?
Well, for this year, it was just Noble, but I would anticipate seeing the same thing at Oxford, and in fact, they, they've already added a Lake Erie, Inc. ink spot, and that's because Lake Erie, Inc. got additional dollars, CDBG dollars, so they're going to add an ink spot at Oxford.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, Lisa, I forgot, because Liz asked me to add this today at the end of the day, is that I'm reporting, I was not part of the team that worked on this, I'm just thrilled that Noble did receive another 21st Century grant. We got the notification today, there'll be five more years of the 21st Century program. It'll, it'll be called Noble Explorers, and they are partnering with the Heights Libraries and with Playhouse Square to implement that, so that's super exciting. So we'll again have thirty kids, that'll be part of that after-school daily enrichment program, and it's, it's very exciting. I'm sorry, she asked me to share.
No worries.
It's a five-year grant, total of $850,000.
Right.
Fantastic.
So shout out to Megan McMass and party.
Megan and Sue.
That's terrific.
It's amazing.
Absolutely terrific.
They do such great work.
Thank you.
So I think it's my turn. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I, too, am here to talk about some action steps and updates. I love how the conversation was speaking about each individual school, because each individual school has their own ecology and desires and needs, but we do hope to have every school have a measurable face plan, family and community engagement, that really is focused on supporting student success. So I, too, had individual conversations with each principal to really talk about family engagement as equity strategy, and what we're doing to look at family engagement through an improvement lens. What are we working on? How do we make sure that we're aligning it with building-level action plans? And they're, they're doing valiant work there. I think we can continue to talk about, what does it look like to identify what we're doing from each school? How can we look at the strategies that are working and improve them? So that is part of my work. The schools that are a national network of partnership schools have some experience in developing a school improvement, a plan that is connected to, how do we bring families into this work? How do we share our school improvement plan? It's not easy, but it is something that they automatically do by having an action plan, so continuing to support the schools that are in NPS schools.
Which schools are...
So we've had early childhood in NPS at Oxford, Noble, and Garrity, but our additions was Monticello Middle School and expansion at Noble. So that continues to be part of the work. We're also working with principals and other staff to really look at that progress monitoring. What are we going to measure? That we want to keep talking about, whether it's an attendance initiative, we are doing a lot of work around climate, and so really just identifying what does that look like as a measurable plan. The belief, too, is that we can move some of this, as you speak, into some of those conversations with our partners, hold something up and say, this is where our work intersects with community and families, and this is how we're working to improve attendance. These are the academic targets that we're trying to reach. So that scorecard really is something that they can hold up and say, hey, at a PTA meeting, or a back-to-school night, or an orientation, here's our scorecard, and you're helping us to improve it. I think I'm still on.
Yes, you are.
The next KPI I'd like to talk about is 100% of our schools will have active parent groups. We can continue to talk about making those roles very clear. When you talk about KinderNet, or PTA, or Exceptional Children's Advocacy Group, they are developmental groups that support students. And so how are we making sure that as a district, we're rolling out the red carpet and saying, we want you to be partners? This role is important, and providing some capacity-building support for them. So that continues. Our parent groups and our parent leaders came together at the end of the year to do a parent leadership summit. Thank you for Bev coming there. We talked about some heavy issues around advocacy, but it was also a time to build relationships, provide support, and draw a vision for them for the future. They all want it to happen more than once now, so we'll do it biannually, and I'm thinking we'll do it in the beginning of the year to talk about how are we working together? How are we recruiting? How are we encouraging other parents to be leaders? And then outwardly facing, how are we supporting our schools as leaders? So those parent leadership groups are amazing and important. I count the National Network of Partnership Schools' action teams as leaders. I think about our early childhood action teams, again, our PTA units, because we know COVID did take a punch into some of that recruiting that we normally do. So we're still building, but we just want to make sure that the opportunities are clear and that they're promoted across our buildings and for us as a district, and that we continue to help develop and build parent leadership and support them.
I was just at Fairfax earlier today, and at Rocksmid yesterday for meet-and-greets with new principals, and it was lovely to see both PTA and "regular," in quotes, parents, large numbers of people in attendance, because they want to come and meet the new principal. And then, of course, you get the interactions of PTA members or PTA leaders talking to all the non-PTA parents, and all that stuff is already bubbling, and it was, it was very heartwarming to see.
It's a beautiful thing.
It is.
I also think it's social capital. That's the kind of question you have.
And people miss this, right?
Yes, we miss it.
It's been gone for a while, and this is a place where a parent can have a positive impact much greater than just being a parent at home, you know?
Absolutely.
So it's a good thing.
Community building.
Mm-hmm. And it kind of is that culture and climate of our building, right? The feels and the things that you say to new parents or existing parents. It's a beautiful time to encourage people to join, and it's good that our parent leaders were there and having conversations.
They were, yes, and they brought brownies. So, you know, that's how you make anybody interested in joining the club.
We know how it goes.
Bring brownies.
All right, thanks, Lisa. So we will jump into some next steps, and that should actually say school year 24, so that's my bad. I'm assuming I'm the only one with that mistake, but...
Habits.
Feels like we're...
Some of these say 24, and some of them say 23.
So school year 24, so one of our big goals here is engaging student voices and amplifying the work happening in the district. So I actually am working with Diana to create a plan for social media ambassadors at the high school, so she's got some kids that she's going to be working with, who will be providing us some content for our social media. So we're really excited to launch that and see how that evolves. I mentioned already that we're going to have some more public-as-for-all signage going up in district schools. First and foremost will be the high school fence, that will be coming in the, in the next couple of weeks or so. We're also working on some brochures for each school that they can have on hand. I'm in the process of collecting the information for that right now. We are going to bump up our mailed newsletters. Instead of twice annually, we're going to be doing that quarterly, and of course, continuing to provide support to each principal in the form of content ideas, best practices, and of course, crisis communications.
That's great.
And my next steps are to create that tool, and we're borrowing heavily from one that we saw in action, that Cleveland schools use for the partnership application process, and work with our existing partners to complete that application and any new partners. Another goal is to expand Metro Health enrollment to 2,500 students. I, that's really important. We're at about 1,300 right now, so that's a big audacious goal, but I think it's important. The Family Resource Center launch, this is something that Lisa and I are working very closely together on with the Community Learning Center organizers, and we're launching a Family Resource Center this fall. It'll be housed at Delisle. Initially, it'll be open two evenings a week, and then for, for other events, but it will be a place where families can come and get resources like employment information, healthcare information, attend events like how to deal with your students on social media issues and things like that, but also tangible resources. We anticipate having a small amount, but an important resource of things like diapers and formula, and the expensive things like laundry detergent and all that, and then some limited clothing and non-perishable foods. So we're, we're really excited about that, and Cristian and Sabrina will be the main staff for that, and Lisa and I will obviously support them. And then also, another of my goals is to increase supports to staff, enabling them to better support the behavioral needs of students, and that would include both mentoring and SEL partnerships.
I do want to piggyback on that Resource Center launch. We, I keep saying for families, by families, so we want to make sure that when we do our soft launch, we have a resource fair this weekend, that they'll take part in a short poll to just say, what do they see it being? What are some of the needs? We're hoping that it is about capacity building and workshops, and I think, you know, we've got funds of knowledge in the community, so I don't know, maybe one of you would come and do a workshop.
Just ask.
There you go, Dan.
And that's, that's this Saturday, the 19th, right? Yeah, I was looking for it on my calendar.
11 to 2.
Got it.
Now, for the, for donations for the Resource Centers, is that on the website, or where they can donate, or is there a limit to what they can actually donate that the public needs to know, so we won't...
Thank you for that, Beverly. Right now, we're doing a school supply drive, just, you know, small. I think we've got to get the space how we want it, so that it's not just overflowing with things. There's been some partnership donations around coats for kids and backpacks, so we already have a lot of stuff. What we hope is that people will come, sort of grace the space and take some of the stuff that we already have, and then we'll be calling for donations, I think, in the future.
Yeah, and I think we, we also would like to work with the Heights Schools Foundation, and we'll make sure we work through with Scott and with the foundation on whether we can, one of the ideas from the foundation, from Laurel, Laura, has been, maybe we could set up an Amazon store, or whatever it's called, where people could make, could purchase things just to be sent.
On the wish list, kind of.
Right, on the wish list for that, but we haven't gone down that, that path yet. But Laura has brought that to me as an idea, that family, that people can buy laundry detergent or diapers or something and have it sent to us for that. But we would likely have to do that through the foundation.
And my next steps include continuing to support educational equity, since we know family engagement is an equity strategy. We are partnering with ICS, Integrated Comprehensive Systems for Equity, our partners, leading some of the equity work in our district to do the Community Ally Academy. We've got another one on Thursday, I put the dates up there, so it's virtual. It's wonderful to have the same leadership and conversations that we're having across the district with our community partners, and so that's a virtual link that you can click this Thursday from 6:00 to 8:30. And then we have our second one that's virtual on the 31st. Heights Family Academy will be focused on diversity, equity, and belonging, so that's wonderful, that ICS will be doing an in-person session. I think it's great, because we're starting the year with what their topic includes, which is co-plan to co-serv, and so what better way to start the year, as we think about collaborating and building, that their sessions are like two and a half hours, so that's like the bulk of Heights Family Academy, so it's taken on that focus, which I think is great. We'll also be partnering with Cleveland Clinic to do a sickle cell walk, which disproportionately affects most African-Americans, so that's in the afternoon. So it really is just going to be a day of really building awareness, making those connections, and that is September 16th at the high school. Also, my next steps is to continue to update and ensure circulation of our Heights Family Handbook. We've got the 2024 version now. It was really comprehensive in mostly just dates and making sure that the dates are accurate, so those are in print and ready to be circulated. The other action step that I have is to continue to build and support in NPS, but also the strategy of making family engagement about goal-centered engagement, linking it to learning, to make sure that when our families come, they're better and more informed as a result of it. You know, connectivity is great, but we also want to make sure that they're aware of what we're doing and how they can support. Next step is to also continue strategic collaboration. I feel blessed to work with so many different departments and so many different individuals, so to continue that and strengthening our partnership, and continue to do professional development around evidence-based practices for family engagement. And then the last thing is just to continue to support the teams that exist in the schools, working really hard to move students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there questions or comments?
So Lisa, I mean, one of the KPIs is 100% of our schools have a measurable face plan that supports our students' success. Is there really a way to measure that?
I think so, absolutely. I think we let ourselves off the hook by thinking we can't, but each of our schools have critical needs areas, whether it's attendance or academics, so we know that there is efforts that we're making to engage families and connect them. So if it is, you know, asking the requisite survey question, are you more connected to the work? Do you feel like you have, I think even with what Kathan's doing, to see that families are connected to the success of their student or district communication, that's a data point. And so when we talk about how we're connecting our families to supporting their scholars and whole-child development, I think it's up to us to think about what we do and measure how the impact is, how it's landing. So I believe we can, in numerous ways. Thanks for asking.
Well, team, thank you for your hard work this past year.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
A whole lot of new stuff.
Yes, a lot of good stuff.
Thank you very much. All right, next, we have our Human Resources, Operations, and Finance, are you going to go to all of that?
We'll tag, team.
We'll tag.
All right.
All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present Goal Four. Very proud of Goal Four and what we've been doing with staff, and I do appreciate the nice words, and I do want to thank so many people for the hiring process. You know, HR is probably the busiest time of the year, is during the summertime. I know a lot of people take off, and they...
Is it all year, Luke?
Yeah, well, I guess it's all year, but one of the busy, busy times is, is the hiring process, and we have a lot of people that, hiring managers, which consist of many of the board, office administration that are sitting behind me, as well as principals. We have a teaching staff, classified staff, that are on these different committees, just working so hard to bring the best. And I'll tell you, these three days of orientation, we're in our second day, and tomorrow's our third, some of the most positive reactions we have, that I have with people are during these three days, which is just phenomenal. So it's going very well, and as we go into looking at our goals from last year, strategic plan Goal Four is valued professionals and a culture of excellence, caring, quality, diverse, and collaborative. So to run through some of our action steps and some of the highlights from last year, we promoted equity policy at job fairs. I thank Kathan and her team for helping put together a flyer, and as we went to many job fairs, and we do go to many of them, we bring flyers and we talk through our equity diversity and inclusion. to many of them, we bring flyers and we talk through our equity, diversity, and inclusion goals. And I will tell you, so many people are really drawn to our district because of our equity and what we do throughout. And they do express that during, during the interviews. We are doing inclusive interviewing and hiring techniques. As we look at equity, inclusion, and diversity, we did put together a question bank where all of our teams do choose at least three questions from our equity bank, which was reviewed by our Equity Task Force. And Carla and our Human Resources, Carla Morris, our Human Resources Specialist, is also on the Equity Task Force, which is a nice connection. Our interview guidelines are aligned to equity. We have pre-screening, virtual interviews that we do for all of our staff. And we do make sure that we have a very standard way of making sure that we have equitable people sitting at the table when we are interviewing. And we really worked on establishing new partnerships with HBCUs, universities, and organizations, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in another slide. Really worked hard with the team on threat assessment, on really researching it, rolling that out, getting information to schools. And we'll talk a little bit more about that as we go through the slides. I was very pleased with what everyone worked hard to produce. We put together a climate and culture manual. This had a little trouble getting off the ground, but we were able to finish it, and we rolled this out to, to all the buildings. And it's like a principal handbook. I'll talk a little bit more about that. And our Grow Your Own program has been going on for five years. Unfortunately, this was the last year. We have money for that, so we are looking for ways of continuing to expand that. And we had some, and I'll talk a little bit about the statistics, about how many staff took advantage of that, how many graduated through that. And they were given $2,500 scholarships per semester to continue their education on becoming an educator, which was really amazing.
Can you circle back at some point when you do have that data? I'd like to know how many staff members are sort of in the program, and if we can't fund it any longer, really what is the gap? What do we need in order to fund that?
Excellent, absolutely.
And certainly know, I guess, the number of staff? I'd be concerned about, here we are, we've promoted this, and this is a great way for us to fill positions. I just would be concerned that someone would be, that might feel that they, they were left behind.
Absolutely. And that's, and I'll talk a little bit more about that grant, that reignite grant that we're trying to, to get with Jackson, Jackson, Mississippi District. So we are looking for other funding ways, but I agree wholeheartedly because we really have quite a few people that really relied, and we took down a little bit of that barrier for people to, to move forward. Some of our partnerships that we're really proud of, Howard University, this is an interesting story. One of our goals was to connect more with HBCUs. So one of the ideas I had that I worked with my team is to put together a spreadsheet. There's 105, 107 HBCUs within the country, and we needed to, I needed to really understand HBCUs. So we gathered all information, who had educational programs, all the contact information, and then we'd sent every one of them a communication on, please partner with us, and, and sent our equity information. And it was great. Dr. Vance, who runs the teaching program at Howard, actually called me on the phone and said, wow, we'd love to partner with you. And we had some great conversations. And some of the things that came out of that is she said, you're more than willing to virtually log in and talk to the students a couple of times a year. We'd love you to come out and meet with our students. We're going to do resume review, application process, student teaching and fieldwork, and then doing some mock interviews. And Liz may join me out when we go to Howard University. So I'm real excited about that partnership. So they say if you send a bunch of emails, you may not get returned. Well, we got one returned, and out of 107, I think it was worth it.
That's pretty good.
Well, if I, if I can just jump in, I mean, to me, a really cool opportunity is sort of the reciprocal piece, that wouldn't it be great for us to be able to recruit some Howard grads to come and work here, and at the same time, build a pipeline for Heights grads to go to Howard?
Absolutely. Well, we've, we've sent a number of Heights grads to Howard. Only one of them is mine.
You're writing a check right now.
No, I'm no longer writing checks to Howard. Thank God. But yeah, but Ella went with four other Heights kids
Yeah.
in her class. That was, that was a bumper crop that year, but there's no reason for us not to have Heights students go to Howard every year.
There should be more.
Because there's so many programs available as a university.
They'll talk to folks at Howard, too.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
And the other partnership is with Insight. We, we have started a recruitment and retention advisory group. And we talked a little bit about this, Jackson School Mississippi Reignite Grant. We'll find out in October if we do get that grant. And some of the things that that grant can help with is getting a Reignite District Coordinator to help with recruitment and intention, and retention, providing stipends for lead teachers and recruitment coordination, onboarding mentor stipends, and then anything to do with our recruitment and retention initiatives and travel to conferences and learning best practices are all within that grant scope. Some of the measures that matter, one of the KPIs was 30% increase in the number of certified staff members of color who are hired into open positions. I was very proud of this. And all the, the measure and the data is there. Our academic success tutors, we had 21 out of 40, so 52% staff of color. And certified staff, 43 out of 112. We actually hired 112 certified staff throughout the entire year, and that was about 38.39%. So we're really happy with that, with that percentage.
That's fantastic.
Yeah.
Another measure that matters is 90% retention rate. We really want to find out why people love it here and why they want to stay, and we want to prevent people from, or finding out if people do leave, if there are things that we could do better to make them feel comfortable. But we're real happy, we broke this down, by teachers, 93%, administrators, 93%. But overall staff reduction, we did not meet that goal, it was 84%. We do have a higher turnover in some of our classified staff. And we're looking to see those reasons and what barriers that we can help. And so we'll be providing goals moving into '23, '24 to help with that.
And, and you're conducting exit interviews in some fashion to
We do.
gather that data. Okay.
We do. And some choose to take them, and some choose not to, but we do provide it to everyone as they leave.
So are there norms in school districts? I mean, is 80, is the 90% a high stretch number?
I don't, I don't believe so. I think it's definitely a doable number. As far as the norms, I think anywhere in the 90% is, is where most districts want to be. You don't have, you don't want too much of a high turnover rate. So I, I think it is a very good goal that we want to strive to get to.
So I don't know if your staff retention compares different, it does compare different school district, it does compare. I'll, I'll look at this, and if I have questions, I'll let you know.
I've, I've got a couple of things. It seems to me that we might want to break out certified as a separate category, you know, versus classified at least. Because I think it's just a different, the, the classified economy is so different right now, where there's, you know, there's so many folks who are out there, out there trying to hire people, that I think that there's a lot of movement
That's correct.
happening right now, more, far more than usual. But also, I would be really interested in some, in, in some more information about the folks who leave. For instance, of this, of those teachers who left, how many of them had gotten their administrative certificate and are, are leaving to pursue an administrative position somewhere else? You know, it's one thing if, if, you know, a teacher leaves to go to another district to teach the same thing, but it's a different, it's a, it's a, sort of a different reasoning, you know? And administrators tend to move more than teachers. It's just, it's part of, it is part of the career path. You know, every administrator can, you know, when you get to a certain level, can say, you know, I've worked in four districts. And that's a good thing, because you're bringing experiences from four different communities to bear on the, the district that you're now in. So I think I would just be interested to know a little bit more about the people that leave. How long have they been here when they leave, and sort of where they're going in their career?
And Dan, you bring up excellent point, and, and that's probably, that's why we're keeping it at 90%, because if people retire, then they're not here. I mean, it, it, people retire, or people leave, maybe go out of state. You know, it's, it's no fault of, of maybe the climate and culture, it's just they chose to retire or, so that's why we're keeping it 90%. But we do have information like that, that we want to continue to look at.
Because I know there's some people who move out of state, you know?
Right.
The spouse got a job, moved to New York.
Right.
You know, so we, we have that. We have retirees as well. I think this year we had a number, next year will probably be an even larger number of retirees, like all those pieces, but just to, to kind of see that, some people did
Yeah.
become administrators.
Particularly with the classified folks. So I mean, the Amazon effect is real, you know? And so we need to make sure that we are, that we're paying enough to draw, to continue to pull, pull people in for those, those jobs.
Excellent. And here's a, a lot of information on our Grow Your Own.
Here we go.
So in 2122, we hired our first graduate as a pre-K teacher. We increased 66.67% in the number of new applicants to Grow Your Own from '22, '23. And we're real happy to say that three recipients finished our program. We had a social worker graduate, intervention specialist graduate, and interviewed in CHUH. And we have a dean of students who graduated and is currently working. And you can see, we, we give $2,500 per semester, and they really took advantage of continuing to apply for the grant. And we were able to provide people with $8,000, $2,500, and $10,500 towards their, towards their degree. I'm very proud of that. I mean, it was a really, it's really great to see. I will tell you, when, when I gave the check to some of them, you know, they, they hug you and they cry, and it's just, it's the greatest feeling when you're able to, to provide that, that opportunity. It was great. It was really great.
And this is grant funded?
This is all grant funded.
Good, okay.
That's right. All through the Ohio Department of Education. One other measure that matters is 100% of schools have fully operated threat assessment teams. There is a link there that has our manual there. It's also on our website. Very proud of the team that put this together. We do have all our teams up and running. They will be doing a, a professional development on the 21st. We have over 90 trained in threat assessment throughout the district, which is, which is huge. And we were able, I was able to go to the Ohio Summit, Safety Summit this summer, and able to work with the gentleman who actually put the threat assessment together, that we are using, and also using in Ohio. So Dr. Cornell is his name. So it's, it was really cool to meet him. And we're going to be providing data throughout, throughout the quarter to work with schools to continue to have that pro, proactive piece of threat assessment. All right, so I'm just going to go into our goals for '24. We have that district-wide climate goal to increase support of services to staff. And as far as HR and operations, we are the support, we really feel we are, to help with that 15% decrease of out-of-school suspensions. And some of the things that we're thinking about doing is restorative practice training for our lunch pares and paraprofessionals, threat assessment quarterly meetings with principals to review, a high school meeting with athletics, building administration, security, on events planning, climate walkthroughs, vulnerability assessment, quarterly meetings. And we're going to continue with Title IX training of students and staff. And as we support, we want to contribute to reducing out-of-school suspensions by 15%. As, we're going to do a little change on our, our 90% annual retention of staff members and our increase, our 30% increase, we did pretty well, but we want to break it down by building. We were doing it district-wide, but each building has their own demographics and, and its own culture. And we're going to really dig down deep in the data and see about our retention per school, so we can compare the schools, to see if we may have more retention in one school or another, and find out those reasons, as well as looking at the increase in our staff of color who are hired into open positions by building.
How does that work with the fact that there's inevitably some rejiggering of who is teaching, for example, at which building, or who is needed as support staff at each building, both from one school year to another, and then within a school year? We, we have to move people around just so that the organization continues to function. So if you isolate your numbers building by building, how do you deal with those transfers, I guess?
That's a great question. With certified, we do not really move certified staff during the year, so I think it'll be a little bit easier, and we'll have less factors involved. But you're right, with our classified staff, we do have a lot more movement. And maybe we'll look at these numbers as we decide the best moves as we move through the year. We do have another KPI coming up. I'll show you that. We're going to, we're going to work through when we do our staffing on, on placing people maybe in more needed areas or schools that have more needs, looking at, you know, what teachers that we can place in different spots.
Seems to me you, you've got transfers, retirement, resignations, leaves. So you just-
You just have to code it.
Yeah.
Right.
It's a coding thing.
Yeah.
On some level.
We are gonna, we did roll out our climate and culture framework, and we're going to ensure implementation by all schools as we move through the year. And this is what I talked about, developing a plan to align staffing placement to district goals of stronger tier-one instruction based on data and student needs. We want to do a better job of, when we're staffing and we are moving people for the next year, to place them in, if there are higher-needs buildings that need a specific teacher with those skills, we want to really try to align that. We are going to put a KPI in athletics this year to increase participation in sports, increase the percentage of student athletes with GPAs of 2.5 or higher. Want to do that by 15% or decrease the percentages with GPAs of 2.0 or less by 15%. So we do call them student athletes, and we really want to concentrate on, on supporting students and their academics. And we are going to continue with a staff wellness implementation program. We did have this about five years ago. We did get some grant money through Medical Mutual. Although we don't have grant money, we are looking for funds to, reigniting the staff wellness program to really, to really focus on staff wellness throughout the year. And we'll have competitions and some fun activities to do.
Back to athletics. At the high school, there used to be some sort of informal competition between teams about which team had the highest GPA. I don't know if they still do that, the coaches. But it might be something to tap into for your part in this, because, you know, the whole swim team versus lacrosse team thing
Can't beat the swim team.
was a big deal for a long time.
You just can't beat the swim team.
Except that, that, one of the goals of the lacrosse team was to get a higher GPA. So that kind of stuff, you know, you can tap into it.
They're recognized nationally for their GPAs.
And use it.
I really think they are.
That's true.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's a great suggestion. And Joe and I are working on this together. And he has some great ideas that he wants to put in place.
Good.
So Paul, can I put you on the spot? I mean, one of the thing I haven't seen here is absenteeism, staff absenteeism. It seemed like last year, we noticed a couple buildings where, you know, the principals had to really sub for long periods of time, just because there was some either long-term absentee issues, or it, it just seemed to me, it was not necessarily a problem, but getting to a point where it was going to be a problem. Now, I may be out of line by saying that, but it would be interesting to see where, I guess, staff absenteeism kind of fits into this. And I'm not looking for a response right now.
Oh, yeah, that's okay.
But it, it just seems like it's, it's missing, and I know it's been on our radar, it's been on Liz's radar. It'd be interesting to develop some KPI around that. And- And, or maybe root cause-wise, you know, figure out what the problem is, or if there's a problem, or maybe it's just everybody's dealing with this. I mean, not saying that that's okay, but, you know, just, just find a way to, to deal with it.
No, great point. And absenteeism is always on our mind, especially with staffing, and I know with student absentee as well. So yeah, definitely, we will look into that. You know, look, working with our sub, there seem to be more and more people that, that are coming out and are, are willing to work and work in schools. We had six walk-ins, we had one tonight, and we're finding we're hiring more and more people into our open needs, like paraprofessionals, lunch aids. We're at the highest rate of fill rate right now, starting the school year since, really since I've been here. So.
That's great.
Really?
Yeah. At the start of the school, and it's really due to the team really working hard and, and really trying to do some creative things by going to different job fairs, having these hiring events, and really moving people through the process and taking out some of the barriers. So when people come in, we interview them, we actually background check them right away, and we get them into the system right away. And people are excited about that. So.
Is this fill rate for positions that you're, you're hiring for, or is this subs?
This is what I'm hiring for.
Okay.
But Ryan Hill, who we work with, they are having an increased rate of people that have signed up to be subs this year. And I think we'll find that more as we, we're out of COVID and more and more people are moving into it. I'm not saying it's perfect, and we, we do have a system in place for people to cover, and, and people have been willing to cover those classes. But that'd be good. I will take statistics on that to see our fill rates for our subbing. But as far as hiring new positions, it's been a very good summer for that.
That's, that's remarkable. There was a, I think, a story on NPR this morning, and they were talking about, there was like, the city of Cleveland had like thirty positions they just can't, they just can't fill.
Yeah, that was on Sound of Ideas.
Yeah. There are some, there are some that will be tough to fill, no matter where you're at, but we're at a pretty good percentage right now.
Back to absenteeism, I'm thinking about your wellness plan that, you know, if, if that is successful, presumably it would have a positive impact on the absenteeism rate, right?
Yes.
Because healthy people come to work, whether that be physical health or mental health, they're both very important. So there's, you know, there's a place where you can have an impact.
And I will also note, especially towards the beginning of the year, last year, we definitely still had staff who were contracting COVID. So that also was, you know, playing a role. So hopefully, as we continue to come out of that, we'll have less of that as a factor behind, student and staff.
Can we plan now to have a vaccination clinic for the fall round? Because we all need to get our flu shots and whatever the next COVID shot looks like. And if we can just line up and do it in the gym, right?
Those are some activities we want to bring back. Absolutely. Absolutely.
You were talking about building community earlier. That is a community event in a crazy sort of way, just like the blood drives at the high school are a fascinating community event. You bring people into the building for something that helps everyone. It's a good thing.
One question, Paul, about the Grow Your Own grant. You said that's over?
Yes. Unfortunately, the funds, we've had it for five years. We had two grants, but it is over September.
Is there something that might be coming down the pipe that maybe we can apply for, or?
Well, I, I, we have to, when you have these grants, you have to present to ODE. And through the, I've done two presentations, and I really stress to say how we really have benefited from this. We want to continue this kind of work. They didn't come out with another grant, but I think more and more people are finding that Grow Your Own to be beneficial. And hopefully, this insight, if we do get this grant, we can utilize that a little bit towards this. But we do want to continue to find funding sources to, to continue.
Yes.
It really is a priority to continue this. It really is.
Liz, do we have a, a draft of the climate and culture framework? Was that something that was ever shared with us as a board, or is that still?
We haven't shared it, but we, we can share. We shared it with the principals for feedback at their opening retreat. But, you know, we can make that available.
Okay.
All right. Any more questions on Goal Four?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. No, George is unable to be with us. He has some medical things going on with the family, so he does apologize for not being here. So I'll do my best to go through some of the slides, and I'll ask Mr. Gainer to jump in when you can.
Gotcha.
So as far as Goal Five, operations, resources, finances, technology, and facilities. So some of the action steps in review of Goal Five, the district has a new ten-year roof and facade plan completed by Taylor Consulting. GPD engineers have investigated and provided a report on school HVAC systems. Review and discuss both reports. George will be doing that with the operations staff to prioritize the maintenance equipment replacement for a district five-year plan using those permanent improvement funds. And he will share the district five-year plan with cabinet and the board when that's completed. Okay. The, George and, and our team was very, very busy this, this past year with so many replacement projects, and you can see the list there. Some of the things that are finalizing, some of the elementary schools, the Board of Ed, Wiley and Milliken HVAC control replacement projects. And I won't read through all of them, but you can see for twenty-three, twenty-four, George has placed all the different projects and where we are in the process. So we have some roofing. We do have some HVAC replacement systems. We will be doing some parking lot repairs. That's going to start actually next week. And throughout the weekends, they're going to be doing those throughout the district. And you will see that the roof and facade, ten-year maintenance plan is, is underway. And again, some HVAC systems that we've been looking at to replace.
Okay. So I expect you may not be able to answer this, but did they, did they get all the smart boards in that was supposed to go in?
Yes. All the smart boards, and that actually, elementary school smart board phase two is nearing completion.
Oh, I see it here.
So, yep, that'll take care of all seven elementary schools.
Then we have to go to middle schools?
No.
No. Right now, our middle schools and high schools are, are good through the...
Phase one was high school and middle schools. Summer two was elementary.
So this will update all our schools at this time.
Thank you.
Sure. All right. So action steps for this upcoming year, develop a master facility plan that evaluates the school district's facilities using data and a lens on equity across the district. Complete transition of work orders and maintenance and preventative, maintenance direct, and asset essentials. We've been really working hard to make sure that we do that transition. We do make sure those orders are filled in a timely manner. And then we're setting expectations for operations staff related to preventance, maintenance, work orders, and general work orders. And that is ongoing and a goal throughout the year for our operations staff.
So, I mean, I think we're closing out the facilities. If I just jump, jump to the next slide, but I really want to emphasize the, the importance of us getting a handle on the PNI funding. And I think it's in Liz's goals, as well as Scott's goals. I suspect, I think, I don't remember how we actually worded it in there. But, I mean, just knowing how that's going to dovetail, I suppose, into the work that Taylor Consulting has done and GPD, I mean, I think it's important that we have a good handle on it.
Correct. And I think those two surveys were the first steps in that process. And then, you know, we've committed, and it probably should be one of the action steps that, and it's not listed here, but to really, well, it is in terms of a five-year plan for PI, but we're really going to do it in kind of a format that's much the same as the five-year forecast. So you can see some history, you can see how the money's been spent, but also you'll see a five-year forecast out. And then there'll be probably a lot of conversation in terms of how we intend to meet those needs, both from PI, some potential set-asides from general fund, or other financing options, whatever that looks like. I think that's going to be a big, a big project for the next couple of years.
Well, I know we talked about it in our board retreat a couple months ago. But I also know, you know, Beverly and I have been on this board for years, and you've had two new board members coming on. I just want to make sure that, you know, they understand the impact and, you know, what the deferred maintenance actually is, what's it costing us. We, we took money out of our PNI budget to pay for the high school with, with the cops' funding.
We did.
And now, when you sort of look at it from a big picture, you know, I'm concerned about that. I, well, I think we all are.
George, that, he's going to be sharing that information.
Correct.
Right.
We will, we'll have a work session on it for sure, but also he'll be sharing that information. I know with Jody and Beverly this Friday where he is, and then we'll do like a larger, you know, connection.
That's great. Okay, good. Okay.
Because I'm just looking at the fund summary for the month of July. It looks like we only have a million dollars unencumbered in Fund of 003, right? That's permanent improvement.
Correct.
So.
Although, don't forget...
There should be new money coming in from...
Correct. So there will be new tax dollars coming in for the PI levy, but also the cycle and the way that those funds are committed, George frontloads all of his projects. So all the things that are happening right now are encumbering.
All right. The three point seven encumbered is, is...
Everything that's happening now.
For this year, this, this new year that's about to begin.
Yes.
Tomorrow.
Yep. If I could just add one thing from a completely different angle on this that I think is really important, is that as we talk about action steps in here, I think that we need to have a human capital action step as part of this because some of the, there's a guy sitting in the back row that's a perfect example of this. There's a knowledge, this is such an extremely precise knowledge set that we need to make sure that we maintain and are constantly cultivating, that, you know, I think that there's a personnel piece that I would like to see part of, of the long-term plan for this district that is built into what we are doing and what we are planning. It's a people thing.
That's a great point.
We had that built in for this past year as a priority George was working on, and he was able to get some pieces moving, but we have more to do. So, for example, if you want to talk about the program with our transportation, bus drivers, and also, you know, we're able to get HVAC technicians in to train with our current team so that as they, you know, retire, then they learn all the systems and all the structures. Is anything you wanted to say, Taj? Did I do well? Okay, okay. I'm trying to learn the other side of the house as well.
Yeah, with our bus drivers, even if you don't have a CDL, we will train you for eighteen dollars an hour. And we have had some people come in. They get trained, takes about two or three months, and then we generally bring them in as subs or positions come available. And in transportation, there are positions available for bus drivers. So we've hired a couple.
That training also provide them with their commercial driver's license?
It does.
Wow.
It does. So we have advertised that as we go to our walk-ins, as well as our job fairs. And we've had about seven or eight people take us up on that, and...
That's great.
And we just hired two, two through that program. You don't have to have any experience either.
You raise a really good point about the bench, and it applies to actually all across organizations. So like, really paying attention to, you know, because, you know, we're not going to be here forever, right?
Mm-hmm.
And so we want to make sure that we have enough knowledge, you know, management, you know, we have processes, protocols, standard operating procedures, opportunities for people to lead and learn with those experts in those positions so that as people, you know, leave, they retire, take up opportunities, there are people that can step up. So, yeah, it's a, it's a good thing to, to remind us and to make sure we have that in the plan.
All right. Update on our technology. There was a lot of life, and this is Tony Slepko is our coordinator of technology, doing a great job. Life cycle planning for infrastructure equipment and instructional equipment, which includes network operations, center upgrade. Identified resources in a budget to develop a cybersecurity plan. We're doing a lot with cybersecurity and safety of our data. And you can see, implement cybersecurity measures, including user education. And some of the update on this work, you can read through that. User education, utilize a platform of security awareness and training, and phishing attacks to staff email accounts. We actually have, have a company that, that provides us some, some emails, and they're, they're not real emails, but they're emails that, that staff were, what they do is if an email comes and they think it might be phishing, that they do report it, and then we take data down on if that's been reported or not. And then you do get an email in case you do open it to say, you know, be aware that you shouldn't be opening these types of emails. So there is that kind of training going on. And I could tell you, when I get emails, I don't even open them. I go, I go, Tony, is this, is this part of the training? Because this doesn't look right. So...
Guilty. I opened one, and then I got the, I got the little slap-on-the-wrist email afterwards. And then the next time something really weird showed up, I knew exactly what to do. So.
But I think it's a great program. It does. It does work. And we have to be really mindful.
Yeah.
Account security, a hundred percent of active users are protected to a two-step verification. We have done that for a couple of years to make sure that everyone is two-step verification. Google of Education audit, this is to improve usage, security, and compliance with Google ecosystems. And between August and April, we had eight hundred and six staff members complete the cybersecurity training through Public School Works. And we did enforce that two-step verification for all staff accounts. We had some older accounts. There's a hundred and eighty-four legacy accounts, and they were able to really update those accounts in line with the two-step verification. And I believe this is Mr. Gainer, right?
All right. So to wrap up the section of Goal Five, and, and a lot of this will be not new to you because we do, you know, report out most of this on a monthly basis. So, but just to kind of reiterate those things that we're trying to do in terms of Goal Five and action steps, we talk about the fact that we really want, want to improve communication, advocacy, and maintain stability in the district. So you'll see, as we discussed in previous board meetings, you know, some print materials in terms of the Popular Annual Financial Report that was recently distributed. So hard copies of that are in the lobby in my office and out on the website as well for people to download at their convenience. Also talking about increasing finance data on the district website, some kind of, some dashboard-related data points that we want to put out there. So one of the, one of the steps that you'll see in terms of upcoming things is we want to have something out on the district website by October to have some additional data out for the community to, and have some conversations with, have had some conversations with the board, and we'll continue to do that in terms of those kind of data points and those things we think the community would be interested in seeing out on the website. We also have been doing our three things at our monthly board meetings. That's been a full year now that we've been doing that. So all of those are out on the district website as well for people to go back and refer to. We have some information, or some goals, I should say, around ESSR. So you'll remember that the third year of the ARP ESSR grant is the, is this upcoming year. So a big thing will be making sure that we get everything charged out, closed out properly with that grant. You know, the goals said that we would, we would both lengthen the levy cycle by supplanting the ESSR two dollars for continuity of services, but also that we would provide lots of additional supports for students through the ESSR three ARP ESSR money. And so that's what the superintendent's done in terms of... And so, um, that's what the superintendent's done in terms of all the programs that have been in place with that. So again, it'll just be making sure that, um, we report out to all of you, um, as we're required to do about ESER, you know, what that looks like and how that gets closed out. Uh, and in terms of, um, advocacy, uh, which you'll see out there, that continues to be a goal, um, I, I think we were successful particularly through our professional organizations, as you'll remember from previous board meetings, in terms of advocacy around the fair school funding plan for this biennial budget, making sure that, that they continue to implement that, that the inputs were increased to the levels that we expected them to, to be. So, excuse me, that's additional money to the district, which also is, um, is allowing us to, um, take that levy cycle and, and stretch it out a little longer than what would have previously been anticipated. So Paul, if you flip to the next one.
Next slide.
Yes, please. So in terms of measures that matter and, and, and what we're working towards, uh, through these, the, the year 2026, George mentions the master facilities plan again. That's something that's going to be ongoing, but you're going to see a lot of activity around that, uh, in this upcoming year now that those surveys have been completed and we're doing the five-year P I plan and also, um, uh, trying to figure out how we're going to, we're going to fund those items. District maintains strong financial position as measured by the five-year forecast. So again, we've talked about this before as well, but, uh, um, the previous goal stated that we would have a positive cash balance through 2026. That's now been extended, and we have a positive cash balance through 2027, uh, depending on what the biennial budget looks like. And, and once all the assumptions are finished and we get our first payment in October, we'll see how that plays out, and we'll take that out into 2028 and see what the financial picture looks like there, which I think is then going to inform our work about facilities, what we can do, you know, and what we can, um, what, what our options are there in terms of, of, um, of either future debt or set-asides or what that may look like. So that one is, uh, and, oh, and then that the community's informed the district fiscal picture, and, and that is an ongoing goal as we continue to, again, find those pieces of data we want to put on the district website, make sure that the community's informed and that we're transparent. And so you'll see some specific next steps again, that, which, which we've already talked about, focusing on those construction projects, uh, but also focusing on a facilities funding plan. George mentions the work order, uh, system, uh, again, and making sure that that is, uh, is, is fully operational in the way he intends it to be. Positive cash balance through 2027. And, and, you know, it never stops the advocacy around that fair school funding plan years five and six, wanting to make sure that we, that the legislature continues to fund that to the degree that we want. And also, you know, as, as, as all of you and Dan in particular are aware of, you know, we're still doing a lot around the voucher litigation as well and, uh, trying to make sure that, um, that, that as the legislature wants to increase these voucher opportunities, that they're not doing at the expense of funding us. And, and not that we're opposed to vouchers, but we're opposed to funding vouchers when you're not giving us all the money, that you should be based on the fair school funding plan. So, uh, so we continue to work that as well.
And that's, that's it in terms of the, any, any questions on the finance components that I can answer?
Well, I, I have, I have a comment about the positive cash balance.
Sure.
And levies. I mean, so been part of this district for probably, you know, two decades, um, and just sort of seeing, um, you know, a typical levy cycle is three to four years, maybe you stretch it to five if you're lucky. I'd be curious to see if, is, is it easy for you to go back and see what was the longest period of time we have not had a school levy? Continuous years?
We do have a history at least, uh, back to the eighties, um, so I can definitely go back at least that far.
Yeah, well, something reasonable, because I think we, I think we've beat that.
I think...
Oh, yeah, this will be, this, this will be...
This is a very long stretch.
This, this will be my 29th year in the district, and this will be the longest that I think we've seen, at least in my time.
And, and we keep on stretching it.
Correct.
I mean, and that's, that is, you know, as being as fiscally as responsible as you can without radical cuts.
Correct. Yeah, I think, I think the, um, I think it's really been, uh, I think we've, we've been able to still provide all the things we want to provide to students, but really in being creative in terms of the grants, a lot of the things that you've, you've heard tonight, in terms of trying to find other revenue sources, but also, um, you know, making sure, again, with the ESER money, you know, supplanting that ESER II money really helped with that, but also the advocacy with the fair school funding planning. And even though it's not gotten us where we were years ago, um, it's getting us there to, to, and, and it was unanticipated in the forecast. So, um, so every time that happens, that, that helps us as well.
Well, when you look at the five-year forecast, I mean, we're living within our means.
Absolutely.
And there's been times where we haven't. And that's where I think it, it's a culture change within, within an organization, we're going to be able to do that. And we're at a point where it's difficult to go out and ask the community for money.
Sure.
So...
Yeah. And, and one of the things that's, that's difficult, and I think that professional organizations, even when we were advocating for the fair school funding plan, is they were looking at the cash balances that districts were sitting on and saying, why would we continue to fund the fair school funding plan even more when you have all this cash? And, and really not understanding that, that, you know, that, that, all that cash is really doing is, is, is stretching out the length of time before you have to make your next ask. But it's not like you're, you know, you're...
And a lot of that cash was unusual one time.
Correct.
Right, yes.
Correct.
Lots of money from the federal government. I mean, it's not like this is a, um, resource that we can replenish, not without having another pandemic and another whole series of, you know, terrible emergency measures.
Correct. Well, and even, um, you know, you look at what best practices, best practices are in terms of, um, uh, having a cash balance because, you know, typically you want to have at least a few months of payroll.
Because otherwise, right, if you can't pay your employees, then you are a terrible, terrible boss.
Correct. And so, you know, so when you look at these cash balances and you, you look at it in, in comparison to that or use that measure, it's, it's really not significant, but it's better than we've had in the past, which is good. And we've taken advantage of rising interest rates. So I think we've done a good job of investing the money within the parameters that we're allowed to do. Uh, and we have, um, we have additional money, uh, based on that as well. So that we've, we've, you know, the, the forecast would not have anticipated the rates rising to the degree that they have. And so that's, that's been helpful.
Well, you refinanced our debt when, um, interest rates dropped, right? Which was a very astute move. And now you're investing to take advantage of some of the higher interest rates. I mean, this is the sort of active management that, that's necessary. You can't just sit on your thumbs and wait, you know?
Well, what's interesting is that refinancing of the bonds, that really didn't help our bottom line at all, but it made things easier for our population.
Our taxpayers.
It, it helped, it helped the taxpayers, and it also in reducing, uh, it actually did free up some money in P I to that point. So, you know, when we talk about the debt requirements that are then paid from P I for the cops, that part of the refinancing did free up some, some money that was available for facilities. So that helped, you know, in that respect, which is, was the intent because we were seeing that, you know, that, that debt payments were diminishing the amount of, of, you know, what, what could be done with the P I. So, so it's been helpful. So we're continuing down that path and, and, you know, doing all those things in order to ensure the stability of the district.
Hooray.
So I just want to add one more thing that Scott didn't add in his, uh, ongoing work is the fact that we were, again, not we, he, again, was recognized with the certificate of excellence, um, from the professional organization. And I think that, that that is, we can see the reasons behind that just in the depth of his understanding and activity, uh, leading that office. You know, we, we know what, uh, an incredible resource Scott is, not only because of his long memory in the district, but because of his longevity in the, in the, in the office in the state of Ohio, 29 years, leading a district, um, is, is remarkable, and it's a genuine benefit to, not just to us, but to the community as a whole. So, um, a lot of what we are now celebrating and the, the good position that we are in is directly or indirectly related to the work of Scott and your office.
Appreciate that. Thanks.
We appreciate it.
All right, well, it seems we have come to the conclusion of this update. I want to personally thank Paul, Kason, Nancy, Lisa, Scott, George, and Absentia for lots of work. You didn't even share everything you've done. These are just some of the highlights. It's been a lot of work, not a lot of new work, a lot of new learning. I've really enjoyed just watching kind of everyone grow and develop in their own, uh, work stream and really, really trying to make those connections to students and their work, which can be difficult when you're not, like in that direct curriculum instruction kind of role piece, which you guys have done a great job with it. You know, I've had a lot of crazy ideas. You've been patient. Thank you for that. And I want to thank the board for also being supportive as well, because there have been new initiatives that we've brought. You've always asked really good questions or supported or have come to the openings or come to the events, um, or come to the breakfasts. So, you know, thank you for that. I was telling one of our new employees, we have a very active board that shows up, rolls up their sleeves, does the work too. So thank you all for that. Follow us together. We are a team. Looking forward to next, uh, in September, we'll be talking about Goals One and Two. So excited about having the other side of the house come, um, and share updates from last year.
Thank you.
It's wonderful.
Well, thank you, Superintendent Kirby. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I have motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Gainer, will you call the roll?
Mr. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes. Thank you all and good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.